Good afternoon, everyone. We're certainly happy for you all to be here with us this evening. Let us bow heads and a word of prayer. Most holy eternal God our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for Lord being in the land of the living. Thank that we can be seen and not viewed. And we just ask you continue to bless our city, protect us, keep us from all evil and danger. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Before I go into the agenda, I just want to take the perfect, personal privilege to invite everyone to the Railroad Corner groundbreaking. If you listen to us via social media, invite you to the groundbreaking because it is very important to us. It's the time has come for us to arise and change the trajectory of the Railroad Corner. So if you're out there, we're looking for you to be there tomorrow at ten a.m. down the corner of Boulevard and Russell. Thank you so much. We have Ms. Greaves who has, who is owned by Zoom, I think, and our attorney is owned by Zoom. So they are here with us. Okay, our first item on the agenda is the consideration of June fourth, two thousand twenty-four City Council meeting.
Group of passage?
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Ms. Greaves, how you voting?
Aye.
All right, okay. And one abstain from Ms. Knox, okay? Okay, number two, consideration of June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four City Council special, uh, meeting minutes, special meeting minutes.
Group of passage?
Uh, motion was made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You was, you was there for that one, Ms. Knox?
I'm staying too. I wasn't there.
Okay. And Dr. Kalu abstain from June eleventh, he wasn't there. Okay. All right, we have an appearance tonight by Mr. Lynn, Fair President, Orangeburg County Fair Association. Give us update on Orangeburg County Fair Association, June, July, the fourth of July at the fairground. Mr. Lynn, can you come to the podium, Mr. Hare, can you come to the podium and state your name and your address, please?
My name is Lynn Hare, uh, address is three fifty Magnolia Street with the fairgrounds. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to give you all a little tutorial, a little update on the fairgrounds. Just to let you all know that, uh, some of the city and county, um, people don't know how old the fair is. The fair started in nineteen eleven, uh, on the top picture. That's what the, uh, main exhibit building looks like. The bottom picture is what it looks like today. There's a little change on that, but, um, with the, with the, uh, fairgrounds, when it was established, it was a way for the local citizens to showcase their crops, crafts, and goods. We still carry on that tradition today. Another reason the fair was established was local citizens showcased their livestock and, uh, food conservation and other, um, field crops, the vegetables showcased that. Uh, we still enjoy that tradition and are lucky to have our four H and FFA groups come in to help us with that, showing the livestock and that kind of thing. Another, uh, big draw for the fair is the, uh, barn, the petting zoo. Children and adults of all ages enjoy interacting with the animals in the barn. You can come, um, on school days. The, uh, lunch during the week at the fair is always a busy time for people to come to get lunch during school days. Uh, it gets extremely busy. We had about three thousand, uh, students from Orangeburg County, Calhoun, Barnwell, Bamberg, and I want to say one other county came through last year on the three days of school days. That was pretty impressive. I think that, um, exceeded our goal from the years past. The next is concessions, of course, uh, everybody likes to eat in Orangeburg County. So we have a big concessions. We have a lot that is, um, the most of the same ones that are, uh, coming back and we've got some new ones, uh, also. But, uh, the school days, getting back with the school days, we love to get those kids in here so they can show, we can show them a good day at the fair, the agricultural education part of what we are about. Uh, that agricultural education. The, the fairgrounds, the carnival, the, um, we had the same carnival as we had last year. They're, uh, they're coming back with twenty-four rides and, uh, the games and that kind of thing. We, uh, last year, we hit a little over twenty-six thousand people came to our fair last year. So it was, it was quite a, a good bit. We, um, we'd like to see, we'd like to hit that thirty thousand this year, so. But, uh, we had a great time. We, um, worked hard at getting other events, Fourth of July. Uh, one of our bigger events, uh, besides the fair is the Grand American. Everyone in the county knows about the Grand American and how much, uh, it brings in to the county and the city. Uh, last year, uh, I want to say they had a little over thirty thousand people come in, uh, in their, their, um, event. Back in, uh, February, we had Foodies Event, which was about sixty food trucks came to the fairgrounds. We had a little over fifteen thousand people come on the fairgrounds as, uh, as well. Uh, then we've got some other ones, um, National Night Out with the Sheriff Department, uh, Day of Hope. Uh, the Democratic Party Cookoff, uh, is real big in Orangeburg at the fairgrounds. Then we've got our four H clinics and camps that they come out and have that agricultural education as well. And we give those, you know, we, we try to get these kids out here to the fairgrounds for that agricultural, uh, education. Two events that we have, we put on is the Fourth of July. It's a free event for the community to come out to. We have bounce houses for the kids. We've got a foam tent this year. Uh, we've got, uh, entertainment by Men of Distinction. Mike Fireworks is, uh, providing the, uh, shooting off the, uh, fireworks nine o'clock. Thanks to DPU and the partnership that we have with them is to help us out on that. The city helps us out as well. Uh, another one is our, our main event is the fair, October the first through the sixth. Like I say, we'll have Midway Family, um, Lisco, uh, Family Midway coming, bring back their fantastic rides. We, uh, also are going to go back with our youth safety policy. Like we did last year, it worked tremendously. Sixteen years and younger, they had the wristband, uh, worked, um, worked really good. We worked with, um, the chief and, and his staff as well as the sheriff to come in and help us with that. Like I said, we had, that's about all. I want to cut it short. If y'all have any questions, I thank y'all for, uh, the support and, and help that, uh, the city gives us. If y'all got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Mayor. I saw you last evening.
Yes, sir.
Coming to presentation. Great. It's good to know that the county fair in Orangeburg just keep on moving on and expecting greater things. You mentioned school days. Two questions. School days?
Yes, sir.
Talking about kiddie schools. Now, there's two, there's three other schools. Is any specific for the universities here, technical school?
When I said school days, I should have been a little bit more clear. Those are from four K to second grade. Yes, sir. We want the babies to come out and, uh, they get to enjoy the petting zoo. And we've got agricultural, um, entertainment. We, matter of fact, this year, we've got, um, Farmer Ed that comes and does a little, um, it's, it's Farmer Ed's Ready, Set, Grow Show. It just teaches the kids, you know, about the agricultural stuff. We have the Wow Factor. We had it last year. It's a little bit of a science show. And we give that inter, let those kids interact with those. And, uh, of course, like you say, we have, um, Farm Bureau has the Ag Simulator. They come out, uh, last year and they get to get into a little ag simulator, the combine, but, uh,
Yeah, well, I'm trying to help you with that thirty thousand. But, um, I know in the past, they used to have a comedian. Name Jared, Jared Crowder, something, what's his name?
The comedian?
Yeah, it used to be Jared Crowder. He'd come out there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Jerry Clower came out there. Um, we had a country.
Any big names we can be looking for? See, I know everything is a cost factor.
Yes, it is. It is very costly for the big entertainments to come out.
Yeah, just, just ask Hooten and Blowfire to come. That's all you got.
Yeah. But if the city wants to help, they're more than welcome. Any more questions?
Any questions?
I'd just like to thank you for what you're doing. You do a great job.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate. Thank y'all.
Mr. Sidney is going to do item number three.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Our guests. Um, item number three for your consideration is third reading of an ordinance amending Chapter Two, um, Administration of the City Code, uh, by amending section two dash five point two B to clarify the city administrator's authority to adopt and enforce citywide nondiscrimination policies and procedures. Uh, as you may recall, this, uh, ordinance kind of grew out of our, uh, discussions with the Environmental Protection Agency, via, they needed us to have a, a, um, nondiscrimination policy in place in order to receive some, some grant funds. We've kind of gone back and forth with them for quite some time now. And, uh, through the help of the city attorney and our grants administrator, we felt like this was the best way to go about addressing this is to, just to give the city administrator the authority, uh, to adopt the nondiscrimination policies and procedures. And so that's what this ordinance will allow us to do, so we won't have to continuously keep coming back to you, um, for, for approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any discussion and comments session about this ordinance from any of the council members? Ms. Greaves, do you have any concerns?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and orders amended the Chapter Two, Administration of the City Code, by amending section two dash five dot two dash B to clarify the city administrator's authority to adopt and enforce citywide nondiscrimination policies and procedures and pertaining for other related matters. Would you like to entertain a motion, please?
I move for a passage.
Motion was made by Dr. Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Item number four.
Item number four, uh, this is a, uh, ordinance, third reading of an ordinance for your consideration that would close the tract land formerly, uh, I should say, public way formerly known as Arthur Street or First Street. As you all may recall, this is an, a, a, a portion of a street or a street that we're not sure was ever fully ever used. Uh, I just had a conversation with our city attorney and, um, we're not sure that it was ever used, but it has been requested that we formally close the road. The utilities will remain, as far as the electric utilities, there's an easement that will, uh, remain in place that will allow DPU to, to service the electric utilities. The sewer, um, line will be subject to negotiation whether or not the company, uh, would like to, uh, continue to allow DPU to have an easement or whether or not they would prefer to take over that portion of the road, but they would thereby be responsible for, uh, the sewer line. So, um, again, this, this ordinance will just allow for the closure of that road and, um, just third reading for your consideration.
Counsel, are there any questions or concern concerning this road closure?
Mr. Sidney?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do we have any residents, uh, living around that area?
I don't think so. I will kind of defer to our city attorney, but I'm almost certain that there, there are no residents that would be directly impacted by, by that area, from what I understand.
I can answer that.
Yes.
Me too.
There's, there's no resident, no, that road is just go, just a little road go up, up into the business. And none of the residents will be affected or hindered from getting there because they don't live around it.
They don't live around that area.
Okay, if, are there any, uh, discussions before we read the ordinance? Okay, all right. Consent, consenting to close and transfer of certain portions of a road, which is described in CRE Holdings, LLPV, City of Orangeburg, South Carolina, two thousand twenty-four CP thirty-eight, three, three, oh, three, eight, three, as track B, re- re- reserving certain public, public use, uses and easements to the city, providing for the related matter. Okay, we need a motion.
I move, I move for a final passage.
Motion been made by Dr. Kalu.
Second.
Second, and Ms. Knox, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose, any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, the next item for your consideration, item number, um, five. Uh, as you all may know, we're, we're thirty-six days away from the DUIB World Series. Thirty-six days away, and we're very excited about hosting, uh, this event that's going to bring tens of thousands of, of folks from across the southeast to the city of Orangeburg. We, we have been working extremely, extremely hard to get prepared to host this event. Um, I, I give all the credit to our, our folks, our staff, uh, Mr. Taylor, uh, John Singh, Teresa Williams, and just a host of others, um, Jennifer Van Cleve have been working around the clock to make sure that we are able to put our best foot forward in hosting, uh, this event. The opening ceremony will be on July twenty-fifth at, at South Carolina State, uh, Stadium. And we would like, if you all are willing, to have a proclamation, uh, passed by you all that would make July twenty-fifth, uh, Diamond Youth Baseball Day that we could present at the, uh, opening ceremony. And so we have for your consideration that proclamation. And, and Mayor, you're welcome to share with the council and the public.
Okay. Proclamation, Diamond Youth Baseball World Series, July twenty-fifth through the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas the July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four marks the opening ceremony of Division One and Two AA Coach Pitch Dixie Youth Baseball World Series in Orangeburg, South Carolina. And whereas the Diamond Youth, um, baseball has contributed much to a wider interest in the game and encourage young people to direct their energies in help, in healthy, health, help, healthful and competitive team sports. And whereas participation of this sport by youth and by their adult leaders has helped to develop a feeling of fair play, community spirit, respect for the discipline of rules and decisions. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Butler, Mayor of the City of Orangeburg, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four as Dixie Youth Baseball Day in the city of Orangeburg in, in recognition of this, of the players, coach, family members, fan traveling to Orangeburg from eleven southeastern states and participating in the game and activity. We invite the residents of Orangeburg to observe this day by supporting these young athletes and their coaches as they participate in the Diamond Youth Baseball Division One and Two Coaches' Pitches World Series.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that we, we know there's Diamond Youth, uh, baseball day. That's been changed. Um, and we also, uh, Mr. Taylor has some, some gifts for you all and to get you, uh, if you're not excited already about the World Series, to get you excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while he's doing that, I just want to, to encourage the entire Orangeburg community to come out and support our young people. This is an opportunity to, to really rally around them and the great sport of baseball. And, um, we thank everyone for all of their sponsorships and, and their volunteer, uh, volunteer residents. So this is going to be a great, great event for Orangeburg and we're very excited to host it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Everett, I'm supposed to present this to you?
Oh, yes.
Very good.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Sidney?
Yes, sir.
I know we are getting ready for the, for the World Series. And, uh, now we are getting ready to, uh, make a first lift of the gateway into Orangeburg. You know, as I drive past that area, I still see that, um, is it a motor home beside what we're trying to do?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
What do you, what plan do you have with that motor home?
So, it's a great question. We're going to put up, that, that project will have, uh, a nice fence there with greenery, so it'll be a, a, a definite separation there. Uh, obviously, we don't own that property with, with the motor home, so, um, that is private property.
I was just thinking that somebody driving into Orangeburg seeing that, in a trailer, whatever it may be, and then we're having the gateway design over there. I think, uh, if they can donate that to the city.
Never know, never know. Well, we will, certainly, it's been designed in a way that will minimize the visual impact of that.
That, that trailer belongs to the Wynn's family. The Wynn's family, they dead, you know, and I don't know how far it is, you know, the, the man, you remember where that trailer is? Yeah, it, it belongs to the Wynn's, George, George Wynn. Well, he's dead, his mom dead, dead. Somebody down in the family. Okay, item number six, Mr. Mister Everett?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, you, you all may have been made aware that the, the city of Orangeburg, we're very grateful. We received a one point seven million dollar grant award for stormwater drainage improvements on Adden Street from the South Carolina Office of Resilience. I, I've asked our good friend, Mr. Kevin Gant, and I, I will say this as Kevin is, is walking up. Kevin may not be of, from Orangeburg, may not live in Orangeburg, but he is one of the biggest supporters of Orangeburg. He was instrumental. He was instrumental in helping us, uh, obtain this grant award. Uh, he works with Carolina T. He used to be with, uh, DOT. Um, and he has just been a great partner, a great supporter of Orangeburg, and I cannot thank you enough for everything that you do for the city. Um, and so I've asked him to come forward and just, uh, give a, a brief overview, overview of this grant. And we all know that we have stormwater drainage issues throughout the city and, and flooding that occurs throughout the city. Well, this is a, a, a huge step in helping to address, uh, those, uh, flooding and stormwater drainage issues. Thank you, Sidney. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Butler, Council. Um, Sidney gave a great intro to this, so I can strike the first couple of bullets that I had, and we'll get straight to business. Um, my firm was selected by the South Carolina Office of Resilience to perform a drainage study. And, uh, we came down and did a, um, community meeting at the city gym, um, about a couple of years ago. At that meeting, we got twenty-two locations that had drainage issues in the city. Uh, six of those advanced through committee with city representation and SCORE and, and my firm. And, uh, we did full investigations on those for the drainage study. Um, Adden Street ranked very high with the criteria that we were given from the Office of Resilience. And, and that pushed it forward among the projects that were, um, listed in the city of Orangeburg. Those projects that were selected from our study advanced to compete around the state for additional funding. And that is how you receive this money, uh, to make the drainage improvements on Adden. Um, one of the strongest, uh, components is the benefit cost ratio, which we were able to help a lot of people with maximize benefit, but the cost of the project was not as much. So that helps you to get to this point and win the award. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the location. Um, I'm not sure whose, uh, district that's in. But the section of Adden Street is from Windsor down to Riverside, uh, right in front of Spray Park. So I know you, everyone knows where that area is. That particular section gets a lot of flooding at that lower end. I can tell you where it is because I've seen the pump trucks out there after it rains really hard. It's two houses away from Riverside, and they always have to go in there and blow out that pipe so it can drain. So what we did in that existing condition is, is valley gutters in there, so the water traps out to the side of the road, runs down to that low point and crosses, goes through a pipe and ends up in Sunnyside Canal. What we did in the study was to recommend that we do larger pipes and install more catch basins, which will pull that water off the road quicker, more efficiently, and make it safe for the public to travel, so the water would not be standing in the road. Uh, one of the other benefits of the project is that we're going to upsize that outlet pipe that pulls the water out into Sunnyside, so it'll make it operate so, so much more efficiently. So we shouldn't have people out there every time it rains to, to get that water off the road. So, um, very excited about that. And, um, the Office of Resilience, from this point, is going to administer, administer these grant funds. So they will give full oversight to it and, and follow it from this point forward. I would say that Sidney is in contact with Ms. Felicia Lewis, who is the program manager, um, and would, would guide this forward. So I'm not able to give you a schedule. Um, you, you, you do have a budget with the grant award, um, but I'm not able to give you a schedule to tell you how long that would be, but it will be, um, administered and overseen by the Office of Resilience located in Columbia. Would you have any questions for me?
I, I just like said, that's my district, and I appreciate it. We need help.
Yes.
Those people, water is in their yard, awful.
Yeah, I, I noticed the two houses on the end, right near Spray Street, and water ponds. Um, I found some old photos from the storms back in fifteen and sixteen. And you, you can see the water actually overtopping Sunnyside and going into those backyards, like up to the doors. So that's definitely something that we want to try to alleviate and make better for those residents.
They need help.
Yes.
Yes, yes, they do.
Yeah, we want to see that done.
Yeah, so I'm very excited, um, that you won this because you had to compete at a state level to get this funding. And, uh, to, to have a project that we could, we could, uh, highlight and then go compete at a state level and win, uh, that's an awesome achievement. So I'm, I'm very happy for you. Very happy.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah, um, thank you, sir. The number is that one million, how many?
One point seven million.
One, one point seven?
Yes.
Million dollars?
Million.
For that area which you just spoke of.
That block.
Now, I don't know how you figure these things out, but I'm saying it's not going to take one to take one point seven million to do that. So, what happens with the reserve? What happened with the leftover? You going to come further up?
Well, I will tell you that that estimate does include taking the plans to a final state. So, what we developed to do the study was conceptual plans that are about ten percent complete. So, what we'd have to do is assign an engineering firm to complete the plans, because what we did was just a study and enough to come up with an estimate for the project so that we could do the benefit cost ratio and qualify for the funding, if that makes sense.
That makes sense.
So, there's some.
Still, what happens to the leftover?
Well, I'll tell you.
If there's any, if there's any.
Yeah, so, working with a lot of state and federal funding, I think you have a nice number here to complete the work and get the engineering in, and there may be some C E and I in there too for inspection. So, what I would tell you is, if you, if it was one point two, I would be afraid, because the overrun usually comes back to the subrecipient. And so, now we would be talking about you trying to fund that. So, I think it would be better to do the work, get all the engineering done, and let it for construction, and the construction prices, I can tell you, over the last three or four years since COVID, are up twenty-five, thirty, forty percent.
Right.
And just, just the time that you buy sections of concrete pipe, and we're going to pipe both sides of this, so it's a lot of material underground that's proposed in the project that you won't see. The cat spasms have to be installed. If you have any utility conflicts, you got to work around that. Sorry, Warren. But if you have any utility conflicts, you got to work around those as well and do any other relocation. So, I think looking at the market and from projects that we bid that are comparable, I think this is a good number because it does include the engineering required to finish the plans. I think you got a good number, Council.
If there's anything left, come, Mr. Strowman, you don't mind if they come a little further over and get any different.
It's the tape that to do that, though.
He's trying to spread the peanut, but. Adorable.
I've seen a war come out of pipes in the middle of the street, the pipes.
Yeah, yeah, I saw a lot of pictures of it because we did research. It's really bad. It's really bad.
It's the tape that money.
Yeah, I think it'll take it and leave very little, but.
I don't believe you have any leftover.
He just want the job done.
If they do it right, they'll do it right. I'm glad to see that.
They have enough money to do it right, that's the other thing, because I'd hate to see it go into an overrun, and then we have to come to Council to help.
We have that through your house, it's in a pond, the house is in a pond.
Yeah, and those last two are.
It's awful.
Thank you, Mr. Gant, for this grant. We're certainly happy, and we want to serve our citizens to the best of our ability and make them be safe in their homes wherever they live.
Yes, yes, sir. All right, any other questions for me, Council?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Gant, for your assistance in providing or securing these funds for the city. Kind of speaking to Councilmember Hannah's question a little bit, I'm certain that these problems, and even I think with the numbers that you provided, exist elsewhere in the city and county. So, is there a possibility that future funding could be provided to address some of these other areas as well? Or how often does this type of funding come around or is made available?
I can tell you that this specific funding came available because of the floods in twenty fifteen, sixteen, and I think there was a subsequent flood in eighteen. And the funds were identified for specific areas of low to moderate income residents. The Office of Resilience would manage funds that may come from different sources that would be able to help you with other drainage issues in your community, but you kind of have to keep trolling around to see when those funds are available and what are the criteria for the funding, and that's where it gets to be difficult. This was specific to the areas damaged by the floods and was outlined through C D B G mitigation, but I think it would be good for Sidney to stay in touch with the Office of Resilience for future funding that may come available, and so I think he has those contacts.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Greaves, I would just add that we are in contact with federal agencies about receiving, trying to apply for additional funding, particularly, we have spoken with Councilman Cliver's office, and Dalton Tresvant has been very helpful in trying to point us in the right direction to get additional funding, because we all know that we certainly have our, our issues with flooding in different areas of the city. So, we are, we are certainly pursuing other funding opportunities.
Any more questions? I would like to add something, Sidney.
Yes.
I was just, for the record and for the public to hear, that we are, we want to make everybody aware that a lot of our projects that we are completing is not coming from city funds, they're coming through grant money, and this money has to be applauded. Today, one point seven million dollars, regardless of what our budget look like, we're not spending, we're being a wuss. I want to give you recognition, Sidney, and your staff and people that write grants and oversee grants, and the contacts that you all make throughout the city and throughout the state, national level, bringing this kind of money into our city, because this is the first that has ever happened at this scale. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Well, it's good to, good to have partners and folks in high places. Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, number seven, the appointment to the Hill Press Golf Course Commission.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number seven for your consideration, we have two appointees whose terms are expiring on July first, twenty twenty-four. They, for the Hill Press Golf Commission, they are Mr. Derek Simpson and Mr. Francis Falling, both of whom are willing to serve an additional term if you all are amenable to that. We did not receive any additional nominations from Council, so for your consideration, again, there's Mr. Derek Simpson and Mr. Francis Falling for an additional term each.
Okay. Do y'all have any objections to make the motions, to somebody make motions for us for these two?
I make a motion, we accept these two names, Simpson and Mr. Falling.
I second today.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman, second by Councilman Lu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you. Matters pertaining to Department of Public Utilities.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, good evening.
Good evening.
I do want to thank Mr. Hannah for reminding me of my younger days and Mr. Jared Clower. And I do want to commend, echo Mr. Evering's comments on Mr. Gant, and as he went through this process, he engaged our staff to do a really thorough job on the areas that they have determined that need the most work, so we applaud their efforts and along with the city administrator and his staff as well. You have a, for you, Mr. Mayor, an item, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, an item that we have talked about for quite a while. As you may recall, we received, took ownership of the North Woods Estates Sewer System some time ago. The City of Orangeburg Department of Public Utilities has been operating that system, and we have solved the problems of the citizens on that system, in that they are now the recipients of a stable rate, they are not subject to the fluctuating costs that are going on, but those problems that cause the fluctuating costs still exist. And so, over the last couple of years since we have owned the system, we have been targeting efforts to address that, first by using funding that Orangeburg County has, has provided, seven hundred thousand dollars to begin to address the issues that the system has, and then now we have successfully competed for a grant from the Rural Infrastructure Authority to continue that work and move us into a better direction to assist in sealing up the system and making it a better, better system long term. And so, on tonight, we simply ask that you authorize the acceptance of a one thousand, one million dollar grant from South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority for the North Woods Estates Water System, Waste Water System, and we will continue the good work that you have tasked us with doing.
Any comments about this grant, any questions about it?
No, no question, but just glad that we have it. And I want to thank you because North Woods Estate has been in trouble for a long time. Yes.
You guys don't get calls anymore.
Do get some calls, Mr. Harley, but they're all very pleased. Received one on Sunday afternoon, she said, why you didn't call me and tell me? I said, you be okay, you found out. Yeah, but they're, they're very pleased, they're very pleased.
Great.
Pay me the motion?
Yeah.
I made move that we accept the one mil, one million?
One million.
Now, the grant award for South Carolina Rural Infrastructure.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Second.
Second by Councilman, not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, the motion is carried, thank you so much.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, along with that, I'd like to hear the total on, on the total city grants, the DPU's portion, we have been able to obtain about twenty million in grants or more, and we're still seeking, so I bet you that number has, as you said earlier, has really skyrocketed. We will continue to do that as best we can.
Oh, thank you very much. We so glad to secure this kind of money. This is great, y'all. We be excited. We don't have to pay nothing out of, we're able to secure this and get our customers satisfied, amen. All right, now, we, we need a motion, we're going into executive session, section, session to discuss item number nine, discussion of negotiation incident to propose contract arrangement, propose for sale, purchase of property receipt, legal advice where legal advice relates to the matter covered by the attorney, client privilege, project, substation text number zero one five one one five one one zero zero one dot zero zero zero, South Carolina code thirty-four forty-eight-two. Oh, we would like to entertain the motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott, all in favor? We're going to say good night to everyone, and I don't think we'll be returning to open session. Thank you for coming, and have a good night.